Welcome to the Gilderlin School District Board of Education meeting, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please mute your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for the delay. Our first agenda item is public comment. Should I read the public comment first?
I think we usually do.
Okay, we'll start with the in-person public comments. Our first one is Alyssa Gorvich. Somebody give her a hand with the mic.
I'm pretty loud.
You got it? Okay. So just a reminder, there's a three-minute typically, if you can wrap it up in three or finish the comment in three minutes, it would be great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alyssa Gorvich. My daughter Julia is a sophomore at Gilderlin High School. She's been on the high school track team since she was in seventh grade. I'm here today to request that Gilderlin reconsider the denial for assistant coaches to be hired for the indoor track season. The indoor team is a very large team, supported by only three coaches, which may seem like enough, but there are over a hundred and seventy-five kids on the team, including almost a hundred girls. The ratio of athletes to coaches is too high. This causes safety concerns. The kids run outside in the dark, and all over the school for practice in the winter, it's dark at four. They often run outside to warm up at meets with no coach supervision. It's difficult, if not impossible, for coaches to ensure a safe running environment at all times. To give an example, I've often seen an athlete finish a race in distress at the finish line, and the coach is not there because they're coaching other athletes somewhere else in the building. This puts the burden on other athletes to support injuries for each other, which isn't fair, and frankly, it's risky. It would be a misnomer to assume running is an easy thing to coach. There's a lot to learn. There's adjustments constantly made. With a high athlete-coach ratio, it's very difficult for students to improve or develop new skills. For instance, Julia has always been interested in hurdling despite being a distance runner, but there hasn't been any cross-training opportunities. Lastly, I'd like to talk about inclusion. The reason the team is so large is because they do not cut athletes. This is a really great thing for Gilderlin because it supports its mission of inclusion and allows many students to experience the benefits of a team sport. Involvement in the Gilderlin High indoor running team gives kids a constructive activity, especially important during the winter months when students might otherwise not have any other outlet. Sports have been proven to build self-esteem and camaraderie. And honestly, during COVID, it was one of the few winter sports that were able to adjust to an outdoor focus and be able to keep everybody running even despite the weather. Due to the nature of indoor track, sorry, can continue to improve their skills because the sport, though a team, has also got individual successes. Students can have incremental improvements at whatever level they're at. I would not like to see Gilderlin start cutting students at GHS for their sport, and they would lose this wonderful inclusion. And not only that, GCSD could also run into Title IX compliance issues down the road. I ask that the Gilderlin District fund the indoor track team at a ratio commensurate with outdoor track and other sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Public comment number two is Chris Scanlon.
Hi, everyone. I just want to start by saying that I feel really fortunate to teach and coach in this district that's always been so supportive of our physical education and sports programs. One of the lucky people that gets to get up every morning and go do something that I love, both teaching, phys ed, and coaching cross-country and track and field. That being said, last year, on a frequent basis, almost daily basis, all of our coaches carried a lot of stress into the seat, into each practice because we had a sixty-to-one athlete-to-coach ratio. And when you think about that, like, that's large as it is, but when you think about some days, some coaches may be working with an event that has a smaller number because of safety issue like shot put or pole vault. And so then those other athletes end up with the other two coaches, and sometimes we could be working with upwards of ninety athletes at a time. And we just found that it was really, no matter how much we planned, and we really did plan a lot, and we spent extra time trying to come up with detailed plans so we knew where everybody was at all times. And Coach Mead can share some of those plans of hers with you. We, it was, it just felt overwhelming, and we were really, really worried about the safety of the athletes and really giving them what they need as athletes to improve and get better. You know, we brought these concerns to Dave Austin, and he also agreed that that ratio was incredibly high for a sport, and he was concerned also about the safety aspect of it. And, you know, our sport is unique because we don't cut. We heard that once already. We accept everybody. We accept kids that are cut from other sports after their tryouts are done. We've had kids frequently that tell us that our sport is the first time they've ever done an organized sport in their life. And we take kids that have no experience with the sport coming in, and they don't have to fight against other athletes and compete against other athletes for a roster spot. And then beyond that, we provide an environment for each athlete to grow. We work really, really hard to provide that same sort of training for our varsity athletes that we do for our lower athletes, to give them all a chance to grow. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I apologize. Our sport is also unique because it's the only chance that these athletes get to compete in track and field, indoor and outdoor. There's no club teams. So if they can't do it with us, they can't do it. It's not like a basketball player that, if they unfortunately get cut from a team, that they can play on a club or rec team instead. If they don't play, if they don't run track with us, they don't get a chance to run track at all. Our outdoor team, with very similar numbers, only sixteen more total athletes than the indoor track team, has seven full-time coaches, and the indoor track team only has three. So I just ask that you reconsider our request to add three coaches to the indoor track program so that we can keep that number and keep it growing and include everybody on the team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is David Kozier.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I've been around for a long time, twenty-five years. I've had the pleasure for working for five awesome athletic directors. And this isn't a new problem. We've been talking to athletic directors for all twenty-five years I've been here about issues, safety issues, number of people that we have on the team. And many years between Tom McCarthy, Mike Salatell, Wayne Bertrand, Regan Johnson, Dave Austin, they agree with us that we need a better number, better ratios. And we're always told, next year, next year. And we keep kicking the can down the road, but we're not solving the issue. And it's gotten to a point where we can't do anymore. I didn't have this gray hair and bald head before these last couple seasons. They've been incredibly difficult. We've put an awful lot in to give these kids an opportunity, and we don't want to not give them the opportunity. I talked to Matt Pinchonaud after the training for understanding. He loved the fact that that room was packed with cross-country runners, and that our cross-country team, our indoor track team, our outdoor track team are inclusive, and that everybody has that opportunity. And we want to continue that practice, so.
Hi, all. Taylor Mead, one of the other coaches. I just shared with the board a practice plan. So yes, I do plan out practice every week like this. I am the field event coach, and this gives you kind of a breakdown of what it looks like to be the only coach who coaches field events. There are two throwing events and four jumping events, and each of those require a little bit different technique practice. You will see that across that week, one, we did not practice the Monday because we were all at two meets the weekend prior. Then you'll see that there is a chunk of time where I had to send jumpers with Coach Kozier and Coach Scanlon because I could not oversee them while throwers were throwing. You also will see that there is a point where I have to try and be in three places at once to split up groups based on ability level and for safety reasons. Although I'm pretty good at being at two places at once, it just doesn't happen to be at three places at once. So we're not here to complain to you that our job is hard. We understand that coaching is difficult, but we're here to tell you that we need help and that we want to give these kids everything that they should get as being a part of a school sport, and we just don't feel that we can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Julia Gorvich.
Hello. I've been on the high school team, indoor and outdoor team, since I was in seventh grade, and I'm now a sophomore. As an athlete, I have always wanted to excel. With the amount of coaches we currently have, it is difficult for me and other athletes to achieve our goals. With our coaches are great, I do not feel I get enough one-on-one time with the coach and do not always get to talk to him about my needs as a runner. Hiring more coaches would benefit myself and other runners and would allow us to improve individually and as a team. Please reconsider our request to hire more coaches for the indoor track team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marcy Cassavant.
Hi. I am really just here to reiterate what everyone else has already said. I have my second child now in the program. Both of my kids are three-season athletes in all three running programs. I'm also a little nervous. My son especially is a hurdler and has really struggled to get the coaching that he needs. He's very interested in running also in college, and it's hard, really hard for him to pick up the skills and just really get the coaching, the one-on-one time that he needs to improve because these guys are spread so just incredibly, incredibly thin. So I just really, oh, also, one other thing. During COVID, like these guys mentioned, when our team was one of the only teams that was able to still be practicing and still be together and be outside and be safe, so many other athletes from so many other sports joined on with us because their sport wasn't doing anything. And I know for a fact that a lot of those athletes ended up staying with our program instead of going back to their other program, their other sport, because it's such a welcoming, positive environment, even with only three coaches with those kids. They just do an amazing job. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Megan Swan.
Hi, my name is Megan Swan. I'm a senior here. I have been on the track team for five years now, indoor and outdoor. This is my first time doing cross-country. I'm just here to talk about what everyone else has already told you. I think our coaches are really great, and they need more support. We accept everybody. We don't make cuts. But the thing I have noticed, and I think a lot of our other athletes have noticed, is even though we don't make cuts, we accept everyone. Not everyone gets direct attention. And even though me and other athletes are higher athletes, we compete at a higher level. We maybe go on farther to other meets that other kids wouldn't if it's their first time or something. We end up getting more attention than they do because our coaches can't be in more places than one. And I believe last year in outdoor, me and a few other seniors who graduated last year, I remember a time at practice, we had to, well, it was actually Katie and Megan Hickey, they had to help other athletes prepare for the meet the next day because obviously our coach couldn't help us with starts and help them with handoffs. So they had to take time out of their own practice, and they had to go help with the younger kids with handoffs. And that's not really fair because they had to stay later, and we have other things to do. And I think our coaches just need more support. And sometimes we have different workouts. So in outdoor, especially when we're getting to the bigger meets, we have two different workouts, kind of, if we're sprinters. One workout would be for the harder workouts, and the other one would be for people that are maybe not necessarily going to invitationals but still want to go there, still want to run, still want to compete. They don't always get as much attention because he might be working with hurdles, or he might be working with distance, or they might be working with the harder sprinting group to get them ready for that invitational. And I think that's not fair to the coaches. It's not fair to us. And I think people don't pay attention to track and field as much as they would a football team or a lacrosse team. And I think they should because we are one of the most successful teams at our school, and people don't realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Barnhart.
Hi, good evening, and thanks for hearing us all. I'm here just really to reiterate what everybody else has said. You have a tremendous program here. I have two daughters, currently a sophomore and a junior, that have participated in this program. And I would hate to think of what could happen if you get to a point where you see these coaches running back and forth. If you've never been to a track meet, you should probably go and see one, you know, whether it be indoor, outdoor, field events. They're not always in the same place. So having multiple coaches to help and assist people just get better if safety issues or injuries come up. But these folks run all over the field, and it's amazing to me to watch over the last few years what they've been able to do. And it's a tremendous program of inclusion. They accept everybody. And I hate to think of where people could be, where you maybe had somebody who just started out, where, you know, an individual where, you know, say for in a jumping event, this individual may have started out and they're, you know, just feeling out the sport, and they're starting out maybe like nineteen, twenty, twenty feet, but then, oh, you know what? We're going to have cuts. So we can't. And that person maybe was potentially, you know, a thirty-plus, thirty-five-foot jumper. And that's potentially what could happen if we can't get the support for the indoor program, because a lot of athletes do bridge their sports through the track program. And it is kind of hard to see these folks running all over the gyms, doing everything that they do, up all hours at night, trying to maintain the level that they do, because they literally are trying to get to everyone. They are literally trying to train everyone and give everyone their due attention. So please reconsider, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adrian Cummings is our last in-person.
Hi, my name's Adrian Cummings. I'm a senior this year, and I'm a three-season athlete like Megan and TJ. I started doing track and field with Coach Scanlon in third grade through a running club. Up to middle school, I met Taylor Mead and Coach Kozier through high school track. Running is truly one of the best sports you can do. It gives you a ton of different ways of making you feel better as a person. It keeps you healthy. It's a lifetime sport that sets you up for healthiness through your entire life. It also helps you with your mental health. Running creates so many endorphins. And it's truly a team-building sport as well. I made almost all of my friends I have nowadays through the track and field program at school, as well as cross-country. And while our sport doesn't exactly draw as many large crowds as baseball, softball, soccer, football, we by far are as successful as them in this school. Each year, we bring a dozen athletes to nationals, sectionals, states, and we bring home dozens of trophies and medals through that time period. In order to do that, though, we need adequate coaching. And right now, as it's been said by many people, we only have a one-to-sixty coach-to-student ratio. That has been a problem ever since I joined in middle school, to be honest. And we need more coaches to truly bring every athlete to their peak of success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more in-person? No? Okay. I have one more comment from, that was submitted earlier today along the same lines. I'm going to go ahead and read that and hopefully get through the whole thing. Hi, my name is Kristen Barnhart. I'm a student and athlete here at Gilderlin High School. I'm writing to you today to advocate for more coaches for our track team. I've been on the Gilderlin High School track team ever since seventh grade, but I was skeptical of how many people, how people could find running fun at first. This sport really stole my heart. When I joined track in seventh grade and continued as an eighth grader, I wasn't very good, but that didn't matter. Track was such a fun way for me to meet new friends and make memories. It was so cool to have so many older friends and to have something to look forward to after school every day. I may not have been excited for the running, but I certainly was excited for the environment. I had said to Coach Scanlon all through elementary school, track really wasn't my thing, and softball was. He stayed persistent, knowing I would be good at the sport, and later helped me find my love for it, and I actually end up quitting softball for it. Ironic, right? Trying to get the inflection right. My freshman year, I started getting good at track, and with the help of my amazing coaches, I put some very good numbers and even ended up going to nationals twice. It wasn't all without flaw, though. Throughout the season, I had various injuries and mental blocks when it came to jumping, but my coaches walked alongside me every step of the way and helped me get some amazing numbers and do some amazing things even after the season ended. And now I'm going to, I'm going into track season more excited than ever. You might be questioning why I mind telling you my whole life story when it comes to track, but I promise there's a reason. There are so many other kids with stories similar to mine who found a thing they loved and they were able to be, to better themselves mentally and physically because of this sport and these coaches. These coaches didn't just help me, but they helped everyone. No matter how talented you are at the sport, everyone is treated with respect, and everyone is cared for and noticed. These coaches care for all athletes and get to know them on a personal level, and have helped so many people in more ways than that can be described. They truly are the best coaches. While they may be the best coaches, this leads me to our problem. There isn't enough of them to go around. With over a hundred and eighty athletes on the team, it is extremely tough for our coaches to be able to connect with everyone and notice everyone, especially, and especially help everyone. These coaches need help. I would imagine that the school would like, would want to support a program like this that prides itself on giving every athlete the opportunity to learn the sport and improve their talents. I did not want to see our track program have to go to a try-out-based sport. If this had been the case back when I started, I would not have been where I am today in my track career. Like so many kids, I just needed a chance to learn and be coached. I would also imagine that the school board would consider that our track program continues to grow each year, that there is, that there is a strong liability on our hands. I would like to ask each of you if you feel comfortable with the safety of our current sixty-to-one athlete-coach ratio. This program is so valuable for many kids at GHS. I hope you take my thoughts into consideration and allow them to have more coaches as soon as possible. Thank you for your time, Kristen Barnhart. That's the end of our public comments. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight to express their thoughts on the track program.
If we have questions that are related to the topic, do you want us to hold them until the end?
I suppose we can discuss now, or have questions now, so our folks don't have to sit around for an hour and a half.
Right, that's what I was getting at. Marie, I'm just wondering, do we know what the student or the athlete-to-coach ratio is for other sports so that we can better see the disparity? I know that some of the speakers in the letters, you know, presented figures across cross-country and the outdoor, but I'm wondering how it compares.
I don't have all those numbers for every team at the top of my head, to be honest. But I can certainly work with Mr. Austin to pull them together for the board.
Yeah, I would be interested in that. I just want to see if there is a disparity and then act on that if there is.
Well, I know we're going to be, oh, go ahead.
I was wondering, Neil, do we know what the, what's the cost, the total cost for three coaches, say?
We do have a scale that's in the teacher's contract, and it's a point system. So we haven't, we haven't gotten together with the Teachers Association to work on a point scale yet, but based on other things like cross-country, we can come up with something approximate. That's what I would share. So somewhere in two coaches would be probably somewhere between fifty-eight hundred and sixty-eight hundred dollars, depending on how the point scale worked out. Three coaches would then be another, let's see, on average, six thousand on top of that. So for, so for three of them, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of eight thousand, nine thousand, somewhere like that.
Well, I know we're going to have an opportunity soon to start looking at, for sure, next year's budget, and we could bring up the concerns throughout that budget process.
Yeah, it's just discouraging when you hear that so many years.
I mean, that's my question.
The thing's been kicked down the road. I know we have a limited amount of resources. I am, believe me, I understand that very well. I just would think that with something like this, we could figure out some creative solution. I don't know. I mean, I know the budget's set and we allocated money where, but there's got to be something. I mean, and this program, I mean, listening, I learned more by reading Chris's letter to us and listening to people tonight about this program. But the fact that it includes, it really stands for that whole idea of inclusion, which is so, so important to me personally, and I know to the board and to our community who has backed everything we've put forward. We have a sports team that stands for that and affects many, many lives. And it's been moved on and moved on, and yes, other things come and other things get. And this got passed. It definitely got past me. But what we have taken out, I don't know if that even works. But is there, and I know we could say we'll put it number one, and I would be the first to say next budget, it's going to be number one on my lips. But I hate to see another year go by with this whole idea of the safety of kids and the needs of individual kids for that kind of attention. How creative can we be if we all put our heads together to raise that kind of money to make this happen?
I agree with all that. I guess my concern is, why are we hearing about this now? I mean, I haven't, I've only been on the board for a year, so I don't know the years and years you guys have been asking for it. But my concern is, there's a disconnect. I feel like we, when the board budget is presented to us, we don't know what's cut. You know, that goes, it's levels to it. Everybody understands that. We don't, we didn't deny any requests. But my concern is, this is clearly an issue, and we didn't, I didn't know about it until now. And that, it's, now it's, the cat's out of the bag on the budget. And the budget isn't going to get any better. It's going to get tougher and tighter in years to come. So my concern is to disconnect between, this is a big issue, and it clearly is, and it's clearly been an issue for years, that why am I and some of the new board members just hearing about it, or even some of the board members that have been here longer than I? And that's something we need to work on here, communication-wise, and from the people that decide that budget going, coming up to us. Because this is something we shouldn't, we shouldn't be talking about this six months after we pass the budget.
In general, it would be great if, once the budget is presented to us, that we get maybe bullet points of what's been taken out. I know we can't afford everything, but sometimes we don't have any idea of what might be coming down the pike, for instance. Neil, is there, is it appropriate, or is there any way to look and see, if we can be creative, like Gloria said?
It's been a difficult year. I think you all know about some of the issues and challenges we're facing, particularly around tax surgeries this year. So right now is not an optimal time to look for additional ways to fund this.
I'm just wondering, on that, on that thought, if there's any federal COVID funds remaining, and we could use this for social, social-emotional health support?
Yes.
Athletics? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility.
I've already looked into that. It's really not an appropriate use of health support.
Well, and the issue is, that's one and done.
Right.
You know, just, I know we may not have thought much about last year's budget recently, but if you will recall, we had hardly any additions to the budget. The big priority was to take care of the huge class sizes at the middle school. And I know the board has heard from middle school folks to say that, you know, we have sixth-grade classrooms with twenty-nine students in them, and that will need to wait another year or maybe two to be rectified. But the only increases we had from the previous year to this year were to fix half the problem at the middle school. We had some increased costs associated with transportation, which continue to increase. We continue to have additional runs we have to drive. We continue to have additional runs we have to address and so on. And we added point two to a library position at Altamont. There was approximately one point six million dollars of other requests that didn't make it to the presentation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, look, we didn't have money. My, my concern is if this has been an issue, been a request for years, and I don't know whether that's true. I'll take his word at it, for it. I, I, I wasn't here. But my concern is that this has been an issue for years and years and years and years. Everybody, there's always the checks and balances. There's always a, you know, you get a little more here, you take a little from here. You know, my concern is if this has been building up over years, why are we just hearing about it? When that could have been something that we could have offset someplace else. You know, look at, I agree, Altamont needs a point two. But, you know, is that a new request? This seems like it's, this is a hundred and sixty kids that are getting opportunities to do what's really, what is it? An almost, and, and, and another vital part of being in, in school, which is athletics. And if it's been this long, these are the issues. And I'll say this, if this was an issue, I wish you guys had come to us when we were doing the budget because then we would have known. It would have been easier discussion now. I, I understand. I'm just letting, I'm being honest with you guys here. I don't know about it till now and it's six months later. That's, that's, you know, we're kind of handstrong a little bit, so. Or even more based on we don't have a lot of, a lot of anything. And it's not gonna get any better going forward. I, I, the public needs to understand that the money's, budgets are gonna be tough, so.
My greatest concern, though, is that if we're not able to support the team, the students who are going to not be able to stay on the team are students who are inclusive, uh who have special needs or who are supported. And then we're not really going, you know, we're not really supporting what we said our mission is. And so I think that that's something that we need to continue to talk about.
I, I just wanted to add also, just backing on Katie's inclusive. My son runs on the, on the treat team, um my son Alex, he has autism. He would not have made any other sport. And the first time I saw him run, it was, and I think anyone here in the audience could agree, was hideous. But then because of this program, he is an amazing runner. He made varsity and he just, he found his thing. And it's, it's, it's a genuine program. It's well-rounded. They do nutrition. They do like mental health. They do the physical aspect. It's just an amazing program that they're building for Gilderlin.
Can I speak again? We were told that it was gonna be in the budget.
That's what I just said to her.
We didn't know to react. Well, we were told it was gonna be asked for and we didn't, and it was, so we didn't know that it was something. I guess, I guess it's part, partly because we felt like it would be, if you looked at a hundred and eighty students with three coaches supervising them, that it was, it was no reason. So that's, that's why I think we didn't, um, consider it because like budget was going on. It wasn't something that we thought would, I mean.
I think, I think a lot of things caught uh us unexpectedly this year with some extra expenses that weren't anticipated. So I don't know what was promised or what wasn't promised, but um.
We're talking about three thousand dollars, sixty families affected, sixty lives changed. That's a drop in the bucket for that kind of amount.
What, Neil, what are the um kind, what, what kind of legal ramifications or boundaries are we in? If we wanted to like um set up a, a townwide drive, say, for people to contribute to a, to get through this year? I just want at least to give us the breathing space for next year's budget, to give us something. But to get something going for this year, do we have any, I mean, the board, does the board have to stay totally?
I, I would have to check with legal counsel. I'm not aware of what fundraising efforts a board can do on behalf of school expenses. So something to investigate.
Um I, I do know that with the fundraising aspect of it, the, the kicker with that, because booster clubs have looked into it previous. If the funds aren't coming from the district and it's our district policy and they come from an outside club, then the people that are hired have to be supervised at all times by a coach. So realistically, it would, it would kind of negate itself out because you would have extra bodies, but the coaches would have to.
We can't possibly fundraise more. We're, we're trying to get charter buses to places. We're trying to get kids' equipment.
But I think, you know, going to what you guys were just saying, we, we don't know. But when the budget gets to us, we see lines. So we don't know what's being cut and what isn't, what is being kept and what is being cut. But I, I agree with what Bianca's saying. If, if, it would be helpful in the future that we could at least see maybe what's, I mean, that requires us to do a little digging and put a little more legwork in. But, you know, to avoid issues like this, it would helpful, be helpful to see what was asked for, what was denied. Obviously, we don't need reasoning, but we need to know why, get, get a sense. So we don't wanna have, we don't wanna be surprised, we don't wanna be surprised by this stuff.
So recognizing that we are in a really tough spot financially, I would still like to request super politely, can you perhaps please just take a look and see if there's anything we can do, Neil, respectfully?
We can look.
Okay. Thanks, Neil.
Okay, well, that concludes our public comment period. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight to speak. Thank you very much. Okay. So moving along to our consi, consent items, thanks. Consent items for the evening. Um there are three things. The minutes from the nine August twenty-two meeting, the CSE CPSE recommendations, and the personnel agenda. And the, oh, thank you. And number four is the financials. And that includes uh the Capital Project Financial Status Report for the period ending August thirty-first and, and the extra classroom activity funds report. Hope I got everything. So we need a motion to approve the four items on there. Bianca and Rebecca, all those in favor? Any, oh, any comments or questions? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Passes, what are we at now? Seven, seven to zero? Okay, next item is information items. Is that onto you, Dr. Wiles, or is that?
That's me. Good evening. Um I have three trade books for your information that will be submitted tonight. I have copies if anyone would like to take a look at them. Um and we'll be asking for your approval at the October twenty-fifth board meeting. The three items are Ashes to Roses by MJ Ock, which would be for use in grade five language arts. Sorry, getting to the right author. There we go. Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park for use in grade five language arts. And the final is The Watsons Go to Birmingham by Christopher Paul Smith for use again in grade five language arts. Um I also have an accolade. We had Camp Invention hosted at Altamont Elementary School this August. And Kelly Werner, who was the supervisor for Camp Invention, sent me a little summary of what the students did there. So Camp Invention was back in person at Altamont Elementary School this past month. Over the course of one week, one hundred and ten campers immersed themselves in several interactive modules. Here are some of the highlights. In the marble arcade, gamers learned how, how math, motion, and mass played a role in the marble runs they designed. In the next module, campers became trainees of robotics aquatics. Trainees had fun designing retrieval devices to capture fluorescent jellyfish, which they were able to bring home in a customized tank. Trainees also engaged in a think tank where they brainstormed, created, and marketed the next groundbreaking device in Aqua Innovation. Campers then went back on a quick spacecation where they had a blast designing their own space pack that carried all of the essentials as well as an Astro arm to use on their trip to space. Lastly, in the attic, campers loved constructing their own arty body, which allowed them to create cool spin art designs. Families found that their campers had a lot to talk about when they got home and were excited to return the following day. And we do plan to host Camp Invention again next August.
Awesome. My son did it, my six-year-old did it this year and it was fantastic.
My kids loved it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I still have all the remnants of it in my dining room, but, but it was, uh, it was great. So thank you. Next uh is the school business information. You and Neil.
Uh first item this evening is the board had received a letter from a parent asking about additional food options for dietary restrictions for any number of reasons that a child would have those. So I've decided to invite Renee Heller, a director of food service, to talk to you about some of the meal choices and how she and her staff work around some of those dietary issues.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Um I'm really excited that I was able to um join Gilderlin this year and I look forward to working with everyone. I wanted to, um, I, in regards to the email, I did want to let you know a little bit about our meal program, which you may or may not be aware of. Um we do participate in the National School Lunch Program. And with that, as you can imagine, there are many guidelines, rules, and regulations that we must follow in order to be reimbursed for meals. This consists of such things as weekly daily, um daily calories, whole grains, um offering certain vegetable subgroups. And also in New York State, if a child does have an allergy, we have to receive a doctor's note so we can accommodate their menu items. As you can imagine, it's a challenge um to have food that meets state guidelines, um having items that students will purchase and eat and accommodate in allergies. Especially with such a diverse group of students, Gilderlin has over sixty different cultures. Um starting this year, being new again, um in addition to our daily entree, um we are now offering fresh fruits and vegetables. We started a hummus cup with vegetables, chef salads, tossed salads, which um you can get like a scoop of tuna on, ham and cheese and turkey and cheese sandwiches. And back at the high school, um they call it the bowl bar. And that's where um the student gets a bowl. There's all sorts of toppings, um black beans, rice, um lettuce, tomato, cheeses. And it's something that they can choose. And again, you could put tuna or something um on it as well. There's also beef and chicken available daily. The high school loved this and I think they, um, they can pick and choose what they want on it. So it's, it's been great. In addition, we do offer many snacks and they all are smart snack compliant, uh which would consist of whole grain cookies, which are very good, even though you may not think so, they are very good. Rice Krispie treats, reduced fat baked chips, pretzels, um reduced fat ice cream, fruit snacks. And um in addition, we have the hummus, fresh fruit, um and vegetables too, if students would like to purchase that as a snack. So as you can see, we do have a large selection to offer um our students. And with that, there's only so much we can do as far as what we can have in inventory, um meet being guidelines and still be respectful of people's preference. And we want to provide to our students. I would certainly welcome, you know, sitting down with someone and having a meeting. There's a lot of stuff, as a food service director, we are trained for school lunch. And there's a lot of outside that we really don't have the knowledge um about. With that being said, um we do participate in a BOSI's bid. There are no kosher or halah items even on that bid. Not that we can't procure it. Again, it's just something different outside of what we typically as directors are looking at. So I kinda wasn't sure if everyone knew exactly what our program consists of and if you had any questions in regards to that. On a different note, I did want to tell you, um, I'm sure you all are aware, but this is the last year for the free um meals to all students. And so we are, our participation is slightly lower as we would expect. Right now, which I was kind of proud with this number, um in the first five days of school, we've seventy-six hundred meals. So that's pretty good and I think it will continue to grow. And also I did want to make note because I did receive a phone call today. Regardless if a child has money on their account or they are free, regardless of anything, we as a district, we do provide your student with breakfast and lunch daily. And there, we will charge their account in hopes, I will make every effort. And I have different ways, if you ever have any questions, on how we do that. But I did receive a, a, a parent was concerned that she didn't have the money and that her child would not be eating. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention if you have any questions or, you know, I'm always available. I, I like feedback. Um I'm learning as I'm going with your district. So it's, it's, it's a new beginning, so.
I just have one. Um Dr. Rivera had sent a couple of comments and one of the comments happens to be about food. So I just wanted to, I guess, s, uh, mention it. Uh she just said that she's heard that South Colony is looking to more inclusive um options for food. So I think you mentioned that they don't have kosher items at our vendor. But the comment here um is maybe you could think about this for the next RFP when we put out the bids of, I'm not sure exactly if, what, exactly inclusive she's commenting on, but maybe uh there might be a discussion for future.
It is new and it is becoming um a topic that we are learning about and addressing. Um I do meet with directors. We usually meet once a month. And that is on our agenda to go over this year. And we tried to, you know, have different items and brainstorm and what are you doing? And how did that work and network that way? Because it's, it's unfamiliar to us and we want to be respectful. And we want students to have foods and we, we need them to purchase um our meals. We're, you know, all by ourselves as a program. So to have those and work still within the guidelines, it, it is a challenge. But it's something certainly that we will be looking at. And if somebody does have knowledge, I would love it.
Great. It, it might be a, a nice idea to reach out to the uh community member who wrote to us about the, uh, the idea that she had. And she would be more than willing, I'm sure, to have some discussion.
As well.
That would be really.
And also in regards to that email, um parents also have the option of saying that they don't want their children to purchase certain things or eat um certain things. We have several that's um, you know, no snacks, no pork, no gelatin. So again, um it's hard to remove something like snack items that certain people would not want their child to have. But, uh, you know, a student that has a gluten allergy or dairy, they need the fruit snacks and so. But I do think she would be um someone that I would definitely set a meeting up with and I'm sure she could offer.
And there might be other parents.
Sure, absolutely.
Put something out through the district newsletter or something, you know, that.
And like I said, other um directors working together within the community. I think we're all facing the same questions. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Neil, you think you have a COVID, oh, Capital Project update?
Capital Project update. So um unfortunately, Cliff Noonie was gonna be here this evening, but if something popped up, he couldn't be here. But what I wanted to share was some of the project work we completed over the summer. It was a very active uh construction process over the summer. I just want to remind everybody, we have about nine weeks to get into our buildings, disassemble them, do the work, and put them back together and then get them cleaned and ready for kids. So it's a very hectic summer schedule. We have a lot of contractors on site and a lot of, we're in all the buildings. It's a lot to manage. So I want to certainly give credit to Cliff Noonie for his oversight on our behalf of the project, allowing us to get to this point and our custodial staff and our maintenance staff who put everything back together so that we could start school on time. If you had seen some of the schools a week before we opened, you would have never believed we would have gotten in and we did. So kudos to them. But I wanted to walk through some of these, uh, gonna go through each of the schools. But to start with, some of the broader issues that were done in every one of our seven buildings. We have a number of new safety and security features. We have uh new phones, uh new security cameras. We have LED displays in every classroom that we can broadcast messages on. And we have a single lockdown button. So if a school needs to go into lockdown, uh they can initiate a limited number of people, have a very limited number of people have the ability to do that, but can initiate a lockdown, which will do a number of things. So secure the building, we'll alert everybody in the building if there's a lockdown. We'll contact Gilderlin Police at the same time. Secular administration will get a notification as well. So quicker, more communication, uh much improved system. So glad to have that for our students and staff. The other big thing that was done in all the buildings is we installed Promethium boards. And these are large screen interactive displays uh used in every classroom. So we were able to do the majority of that work. We still have some of that finishing up, but we were able to, to get most of that work done over the summer. But that's a, a technology improvement in classrooms for our teachers and students that are happy to have that piece as well. Uh to talk about the, the buildings a little bit. Uh Gilderlin also, Gilderlin Elementary also received new ceilings and lighting in the two-hundred wing. We had a boiler installed there and new sidewalks, new sidewalk installed there. The cafeteria in stage four was refinished. The cafeteria in Stage Four was refinished. Oh, it's absolutely fabulous. Awesome to see. And we also installed concrete pad for a new outdoor cooler and freezer. At Linwood, we completed HVAC exhaust work in the 100 wing, nurse's office, makeover was done in that office, and an eighty-eight client bathroom was added. And we had a new boiler installation there as well. At Pine Bush, we've had some roofing replacement, new HVAC installation in the red and blue pods, new paving and a new boiler installation. At Westmere, new ceilings in the 100 wing, new plumbing infrastructure and domestic water system, new bathroom fixtures in the 100 wing, and a new kitchen hot water heater. At the middle school, new plumbing infrastructure and domestic water, new roof installation, new pavement and line striping, new sidewalks, a new chiller, approximately eighty-eight new HVAC units and associated exhaust work, new flooring in ten classrooms as well. And finally, at the high school, we have a new HVAC in the west gym in the library, new roofing in the west gym, east locker room reconstruction, five science classrooms that were refurbished, and those of you that were on the board tour got to see that, really impressive. In Room Thirty-Three, we did some HVAC exhaust work, and we did some, we've added some exhaust fans for radon and tunnels in the building. There's still a couple of pieces of work in progress. Our new track and turf field is underway, well underway. Unfortunately, the weather hasn't been cooperating lately, which is crucial to a timeframe for completing all of the work associated with both the turf field and the track. So I know we had talked about homecoming being a possibility. That might be slipping away at this point a little bit, or more than a little bit. So something to keep in mind. So that work is continuing. It's just really weather dependent in whether we can get the window of time we need. But it's gonna be extremely close, like I said, probably more on the slipping away side for homecoming. But we do have a later football game in October, so there's still a possibility we may get a home football game on the field. So just have to see how that goes. And then, in all the buildings, we do still have some Pro Medium board installations occurring on second shift. So just completing all of that work wasn't all able to be done before school opened. So in order to finish that, we have contractors coming on second shift and doing the remainder of those so that we can get that technology in classrooms at the beginning of the school year for everyone. So I'll try to, I can try to address any questions that you might have about the construction work.
I just want to say I. Those of us I know on the board that got to go on that tour were utterly amazed at the amount of work that got done in that short amount of time, especially since so many programs were being run in so many places, and then to be the day of the, beginning of the staff meeting, to be able to go around and see how far people had gone. Kudos to the entire staff, custodial staff.
Truly a team.
It was an amazing feat.
And we did carry on all of our summer programs.
Yeah, that's what got me.
Worked around that challenge as well.
Yeah, you had a little window.
Yes, very small window.
I was gonna say something similar, just thank you to Cliff and every single worker who still came to work over the summer and rushed and worked extra hours to have everything ready for our students, and they're still continuing to work. So anyways, I just, it was phenomenal to see that. Other thing that I noticed is the commitment on the part of the teachers, because when we went on the tour, everybody was just working really, really hard, and our teachers were also really enthusiastic, and you could tell they were taking it personal to prepare their classrooms, and I thought that was very, very nice. So thank you to everyone.
Thanks, Neil. Next is superintendent information. Dr. Wells.
Thanks so much. My first item is the opening of school, so I will just re-echo the amazing work that happened over the course of the summer, particularly at crunch time, because this was one of the smoothest openings we've had in, you know, a number of years for some very different reasons, unfortunately, in the past couple of years. But I would say that our buildings look great, our teachers and students have come back energized, enthusiastic. I think people are thrilled that the specter of all the protocols is not hanging over everyone's head. And it feels largely like a very normal school year, which means we've had some typical glitches, a couple wrong lunches, a couple with leaking roofs today, thanks to the heaven's opening with a torrential rainstorm. I think we're still fine tuning our transportation routes, but by and large, they're hitting their marks, and kids are getting where they need to go, close to on time. In any year, the first week or so of school, there are delays and misfires and all kinds of things like that. But we're well on our way to having the school year underway smoothly. Learning is happening, and I'm just tremendously proud of everybody who played a part in that. So twenty-two, twenty-three is up. We have our weekend. So my thanks to everybody for making that happen. And I'll just keep rolling here. My second information item is really just to alert our community that we have redone all of our COVID protocols. If you will recall our website from the last couple of years, it had a giant yellow banner across the top, and then pages and pages and pages of updates. We took everything down and started over. We worked with our recovery task force at the end of August to review the new guidance that came from the various agencies who send us guidance, CDC, Department of Health, SED. And we have a very much streamlined set of guidelines that I think are clear, concise, and helpful to families. The one I'm most proud of, and I think I brought it with me, within the, within the website, we have this one-page chart, should my child come to school, with three red Xs and one check mark with how to make it work. And I will send kudos off to our colleagues over at Bethlehem, because we borrowed this from them with their permission, but it's a very clear pathway to help parents know, and our nurses know, and our staff know, what's the right thing to do when you're symptomatic. So we are realistic enough to know that COVID is still with us, but we're much better at managing it and keeping school going while we're doing so. So that, I invite everyone to visit our website. You can reach the guidance. There's no big yellow bar, but on the red bar, where you can find the other Board of Ed and programs, you see COVID-19. And there's a quick link at the bottom of the page too. So it's easy to find and easy to read. Thank you.
Thanks. I like that document too. I read it earlier. Okay, the next item is board president information, and there are seven or so policies to review for info to look at. Of note, one I wanted to like, I guess, ask a question about was the video conferencing of board meetings. And then there's a new, a new one called eligibility for co-curricular and extracurricular activities, which would be new to our district, I think, to take a look at, to see if we want to adopt some things like that or similar. While I have the floor, I'm just wondering about the video conferencing of board, board meetings. I think if I read it correctly, it would not allow for, say, somebody like Dr. Rivera, who can't, couldn't make it here tonight because she couldn't be around other people. In the board policy, it says that you have to be around other people, so there wouldn't be any way for somebody, say they were quarantined or didn't want to come in contact with other people for whatever reason, they probably wouldn't be able to video conference in unless you could be in a public place. Is that how I read it properly?
So there's two, two pieces here. So we can still have board members video conferencing if they're in a public place where other people could go. So technically, not your home, but another public place where someone could go. We have to post that and advertise it and put the address out for the world. So we have been doing that. We can continue doing that. This policy also would allow us to have a board member join the meeting by video conference from their home if at the last minute or there was an emergency circumstance, but we need to pass the, we have to pass the policy, and we also need to have a hearing about it.
Public hearing?
A public hearing, and we need a resolution. So this is the first reading, and Nate, jump in if I get any of this wrong. This is the first reading. If we're comfortable going forward, we would plan a hearing and bring the resolution to the board, and then we could go forward with it. Oh.
Sounds good.
So whatever you said sounds right. It sounds right. So I'm gonna go with it. I'm reading it. It sounds right.
And then decide, and then begin the process.
Yeah, so if we want to go forward, I would suggest that we advertise that we're gonna do a hearing on this and bring forward the resolution, and then after that meeting, we would be free to use this as an option. Do I have that correct? I'm looking at the board clerk.
If you have like a comment in support, that change, to Kelly's point, the idea of having, of only being able to participate in a public area could be in conflict with, you know, CDC recommendations for avoiding public areas. So this policy is great because it gives you an alternative.
Wouldn't that also run counter to executive session, that language, in the sense that if you're gonna participate virtually for a board meeting, presumably you're gonna participate virtually for an executive session, which you can't be around.
I think there's verbiage in there.
Is there?
That references the executive session. So basically, it means, but if you, say you were quarantined for whatever reason or sick, and you didn't want to go to a public place, it just means you're gonna have to miss the board meeting, is what I see.
No, this would allow you to participate.
This language would allow it.
Yes.
So that's considered an extraordinary circumstance.
And so this is a difference from pre-COVID, because pre-COVID, we had virtual participation sometimes.
And we had to, you technically were supposed to be in a place where the public could join you if they wanted to.
Yeah, because we advertised the address where we're at.
I don't know that that ever happened.
Nobody ever came to mine, but I was in the library.
Nobody ever came.
Nobody ever came to join me.
Florida, or wherever you were.
Right.
So if you're comfortable posting your home address, then do it from your home, I suppose, if you, if you're sick or have an extraordinary circumstance. Okay, so do we need to do anything to? Like put it on the, we'll put it on the, um, action items. The next time to, would that be the public comment period, or would that be the?
I think we would, if we're gonna move it forward, then I would say we should do the hearing at the start of the next board meeting.
Okay. Do we need to just, to decide that now, or sit, or do any voting for that, or is it just saying?
No, no voting.
Please put it on the next board meeting. Okay, done. Does anybody have any other questions or comments about the info items that are there for, to read? So the next thing is action items, and I think I need to go through these individually, correct, Neil? So I think it's your.
Yep. So the first item this evening is a recommendation to approve the classroom rental and ancillary service agreement with Capital Region BOSI's for the 2022-2023 school year.
So we need a motion to approve the BOSI's Classroom Rental and Accillary Service Agreement for the 2023 school year. It might be best to say that again. Rebecca and Blanca, any comments or questions?
Didn't we want to talk about some of the extracurricular activities policy?
Do you want to go back to?
Yeah, I just, I thought there were some concerns about that before we move on. Sorry.
Sorry.
Maybe you were. Let's vote on the A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it passes seven-zero. So you wanna pause for a second, and then, did you have a comment about something?
I didn't, but I knew there was, I thought that we, the, again, I wasn't at the last policy committee meeting. My understanding was the policy committee wanted to bring this particular one to the full board's attention.
Did you want to present that? I can frame it, and then the committee can weigh in. So in the, in a recent installment from NISBA for recommended policies or possible policies, they included one that talks about eligibility for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. So this is a policy that we do not have, but the purpose of the policy is to provide a framework around which students would be eligible to participate in clubs or athletics. It could be around attendance, it could be around grades, it could be around whatever we would want to do with that. So we had a conversation with the policy committee about whether or not this is a policy we would want to have. Yes, it might be helpful to frame some parameters around attendance or other things, but we also talked about the pull of co-curricular and extracurricular activities as a positive force for students to come to school. So before the committee spends more time on this, I think it might have the whole board to say, go for it, or, you know, thank you.
So we don't currently have any grade expectations for just being.
There are, there's some eligibility around interscholastic sports participation, correct?
There is.
But this would be like to participate in Model UN, or Black Student Union, or any of our, any of our clubs.
So I had given my opinion at the policy meeting, which is that I don't think that we should have a policy in place because, as we know, sometimes it's not the student's fault. If they're having, you know, a time period where they're having poor grades or poor attendance, it really could be reflective of a situation at home, and then we may be in fact taking away their only, you know, happiness. And so I wouldn't want to penalize a student further for that.
I think it could also drive students to have better attendance, if they are really interested in co-curricular activity.
Well, the idea is for us to read it and then come back next week, next month, and see what we're thinking.
Well, the committee didn't do any work on this, except have this conversation. So I guess we need, the committee could use guidance. Should we keep working on it, or? We would not be able to do anything with it until next school year at this point.
Right, right now, if a student, I'm trying to remember, I've been out of the classroom so long. If a student is out of school the day, misses school for the day, can they come back? See, that's, I think that's what we do normally, right? If they're out of school, they can't, okay, that's what I always thought. And I'm fine with the way that is. I don't think we should put any other, personally, any other restrictions on kids. You know, if you can be here, then you can, you can be part of these things. They're important. To some kids, they're, like you said, the reason they come, may bring them in.
I can't think of a really good reason to have it. Like, what, what is the reason to restrict that?
I mean, my, my thought is, is there an issue where the extracurricular affects their ability to do what they're supposed to be here doing, which is getting an education? So let's say that's taking up too much. I'm not, this is just hypothetical. I'm not saying this has happened, but this might be a reason why we might want to at least consider this, is that if the extracurricular or extracurriculars are becoming so overly burdensome, or becoming so much part of the student's life, that it's taking away from their grades and their ability to interact in school, is that why we need to have it? Because you need to have that check and, checks and balance on their ability to take part in extracurricular and to be a student at the same time.
But we already, sorry.
Go ahead.
We already have like positive reinforcement that way, where the, you know, teams all get, try to get good grades so they can get the academic award at the same time. I kind, I feel like it accomplishes something similar to what you're saying, which is an incentive to make sure that you're able to still do well in school and managing your time well enough. I also sort of feel like that might be more of a parental responsibility to monitor that. If your kid is not doing well in school, I'm sure you're gonna notice.
That's a whole separate issue. That's a different discussion, but yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm, again, I'm just trying to think, again, this is. What is this? You know, my, my, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a reason why we need to consider it. I'm not saying this, we might just sit down in the committee and say, you know what, in hindsight, no, we don't. But I'm more, you know, there has to be something there. If there's nothing, then a student could become over, you know, there has to, it's, there has to be a nugget.
As you're talking, Nate, I'm thinking, well, has this become an issue? I mean, has it ever come up? Not to my knowledge, ever. I mean.
As a committee, that's, that's kind, what we talked about is that if we decided as a board that we wanted to look at this, that we would get feedback from the middle school and the high school, and just see what the need, you know, just get more guidance from both principals on, is this a need, is this something that there is a concern of at either school? So, you know, and look at what. and, and look at what, what really is happening, um, from their perspective of if it's a need also is one of the things that we talked about.
Yeah, if there's no need for it, then there's no need for it. Yeah, I agree.
I guess I think we would have heard about, I guess I think to myself over the years, I, I think we would have heard. Heard that this is an issue.
Not only that, but.
We've had this discussion.
But I've never heard it mentioned.
There are, there are.
We have a lot of issues that don't get brought to our attention.
But there are extracurriculars that create their own.
Clearly, we just had a whole public comment on it.
Yeah.
There are extracurricular, I feel like that we would be overreaching because there are extracurriculars right now that create their own set of, like their own code of conduct, plus we have a district code of conduct which our students are supposed to follow. So, and, and then to go back to the point, just as, as the example of, well, if they're overextended and their grades are going down, we as a district say that we are getting our kids to be future ready. That is part of the job is for them to learn how to juggle those things instead of us putting all of these different stipulations on top of them. Like the real world is they're gonna have to learn how to balance.
Yeah, but I think the eligibility has nothing to do with the code of conduct. That's a sep- I mean, this is your ability to be on the extra, again, is, we put a checks and balances on our, on our, on our, on our athletes. I, I don't know if this is any different. I, I don't know if there's a difference between people participating in an extracurricular or people participating in a, in a, in a sport. I, I, I don't know if there's a disconnect there. And then you almost feel like now we are treating people differently because they choose to do sports than do an extracurricular.
But with a lot of the extracurriculars based on, like I said, they have their own set, like what the sports do.
That's, but that, that don't think this, this won't, I don't think this will negate that. You know, it does negate it.
I'm, I'm not saying it would na- negate it, but you brought up sports, so that's why I brought that up. Um, I mean.
I guess I, I maybe I'm confused about what you're saying there. Sorry.
No, I'm just, because I'm looking at what it actually, I mean, I, I guess I'm looking at like the consumption use of alcoholic beverages, drugs, other than prescribed tobacco products on or off campus. That, that's kind of a one-on-one for a lot of our, not only sports, but extracurriculars as well. So I, I see what you're saying, like having it in writing wouldn't hurt, but I think that that's something that's being done already.
Yeah, I, I'm more looking at the eligibility part of it, the, the next section of there where it's talking about GPA. Uh, you know, everybody's subject to a code of conduct regardless of whether you're an athlete or not an athlete, if somebody who's in a club or not in a club. Everybody's su- subject to the code of conduct. I'm more looking at, my cons- and again, I think what Katie was saying is we, before we do anything, let's, let's talk to the high school and middle school and see if really this is an issue. If it's not an issue, then let's not make it an issue. But we don't know. Again, I, I think what, not everything is brought to our attention. I think we just need to ask the question. A lot of it's probably us not asking questions and now I think we just need to ask the question.
I think we need to ask the students then because it's talking about the student participation just to make sure that we're getting a full balance. I think if we're gonna ask the middle school and the high school, we need to ask the students who are actually in these groups as well.
I don't, I'm not a fan of us controlling that piece, extracurricular activities. I just, I'm opposed.
We control, uh, inner sports.
I'm opposed, but it's my bottom line. Do you guys wanna research it? Okay, I think we have bigger fish to fry than trying to control our students further.
I don't think it's controlling the students. It's, it's, we, we, we control our, you can argue we control our students already. You know, I mean, this, this is, this is trying to set some parameters. I mean, again, I think, I, my, all I'm saying, the question is, do we explore it? And I don't think we're saying this is what it is and we're gonna stop here and be done with it. The question is, do we explore it? And I think, I, I don't think it's unworthy of asking the question to the, to the, to the high school and the middle school of saying, do we have issues with our extracurricular students? Where their LG, their GPA and their, their scholastics are suffering because of their participation. It's a simple question. If the answer's no, then the answer's no and we're done.
Is that even feasible? Like if we were to call Mike Glaster, would we be like, hey, could you look at everybody that's not doing well in school and find out what clips are in and if they actually attend said clubs?
So we did have, um, I'm not sure if Mike Glaster weighed in on this, but Mike Fiscatelli did. And, um, you know, had some positive comments about the possibility of such a policy. Um, Matt Pinchina also looked at it and he's the one who also raised some questions about it. I mean, as a first order of business, rather than, I, we can take this to the full expanded leadership team and say, this came from NISBA. Do you see merit in this? And are, is it, you know, a solution in search of a problem? Or do we have a problem that we really need to, to study? Because, you know, the thing with the updates that come from NISBA, sometimes it's just like, here's an idea for you to consider. And often we say, thank you.
We don't need this.
But not today.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, it will not be a huge task, at least to get a bigger number of our school leaders to say, oh yeah, we really need this because we have problems X, Y, or Z. My hunch sitting here is that we really don't have problems with this.
And it's fine. They don't, and it's not, and I, and again, I think we just, let's just ask the question. Let's not assume that we know the answer to it.
So we can bring that, we have a leadership team on Monday. We can add it to the agenda and get some initial feedback.
I think there's lots of lenses that we could look, look at this through that we don't need to jump to creating one at the moment. I don't personally think, um, we need to be involved. It's like micromanaging as it is, you know, a student's or a family's life. We don't know what's going on in that person's family of why a student may or may not be there or get good grades. Um, it could be anything. So I need to not allow a child to do, put such a restrictive policy on them doing uh, extracurricular activities when that might be the, the thing that's getting them to come to school to begin with. So I think I agree. If it's definitely a bit, that'll kind of just take a look at through the different lenses and see if there's problem equaling.
I, I would think also through, through our guidance, I mean, we have such a support network set up for kids. Those people usually pick up those things a lot quicker than other people will, even a classroom teacher though. They may see, oh, attendance problems, but then they may be able to talk with the student and find out where the issues are. So even, you know, if they're on the, some aspect of that on the leadership team, we tap into.
Okay. Any more comments on the, um, the information items for the policy? Gloria, go back to Neil. Nothing, none heard. Okay. So the next item appears to be service agreements.
Yes, so service agreements. You have a recommendation to execute agreements with advanced therapy in Oak Hill School.
Need a, a motion to approve the two agreements. Gloria and Blanca, is there any comments or questions? No? All those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
Uh, next is a recommendation to award the bid for environmental, environmentally friendly ice melt for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year and that would be to site one landscape supply at seven dollars and fifty-three cents, fifty pound bag.
Motion to approve the environmentally friendly ice melt. Rebecca, Nate, any comments or questions? Besides, it's way too early to think about it. Um, none? So, uh, I was in favor. Aye, passes seven zero.
Uh, next is the resolution to approve the emergency con- emergency contract transportation services agreement with Northland Transportation for the period from September sixth through October sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, motion to approve the contract. Blanca, Rebecca, any comments or questions? None heard. Uh, all those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
Uh, next is a recommendation to approve the private transportation contract service bid for River Run Atosori School and that would, um, go to, um, Rajah, I'm sorry, Rajah Group.
Those are good guys. Okay. Motion to approve the transportation contract. Blanca, Kate, T, um, any comments or questions? No? All those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
Next is res- resolution to correct the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three tax rolls is recommended.
Motion to, uh, amend the resolution to correct the tax bill. Uh, Gloria, second Nate, any comments or questions? None heard. Um, all those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
And then finally this evening, we have two donations and that's a music stand from Heather McCauley and eight backpacks filled with school supplies from School Systems Federal Credit Union.
A, a motion to accept the donations. Katie, Rebecca, thank you very much for the donations. Any comments or questions? None heard. Um, all those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero. Made it through this time. Okay, superintendent, action. How's this more?
Uh, yes, I have three items. The first is a resolution to approve the certification of qualified lead evaluators for our teachers for completing the APPR. That's the annual performance professional, annual pro- professional performance review. That's why they say APPR. Um, and this recognizes Mike Fiscatelli, Mike Glaster, Peter Brabant, Alan Lockwood, Chris Sanita, Beth Beany, Jackie Vandenberg, Lisa Knowles as those lead evaluators and I will not read the whole resolution.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the certification of qualified lead evaluators for teachers. Nate and Rebecca, any comments or questions? None. Uh, those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
Uh, the second resolution is to certify the superintendent of schools as the qualified lead evaluator for our building principals and that would, um, be me to evaluate our seven principals.
Okay, uh, a motion to approve the qualified lead evaluator for building principals. Uh, Gloria, second Nate, comments or questions? Uh, all those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero.
And my last item tonight is a resolution to approve the contract between the Gilderlin Teaching Assistant Unit of the Gilderlin Teaching Association and the Gilderlin Central School District uh, for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
And Blanca is motioning to immediately to approve the contract. A second. Nate, sorry, uh, any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. So last week or last meeting, we had two, um, policies up for, for info and this week they're for action. It is, uh, the first one is the equity inclusivity and diversity in education, key definitions and resources, and the second is the student-directed policy proposals. Um, I need a motion to approve the two, uh, new po- two policies. Katie and Rebecca, any comments or questions? None heard. All those in favor? Aye, passes seven zero. Okay, great. So the next thing is a board committee report and I'll go first since I've got audit. We haven't had a meeting, however, we do have one scheduled for sometime eight AM on the twenty-eighth of September. I believe we'll be virtual for that. Um, communications?
Yep, we met yesterday.
Uh, first meeting of the year. Uh, my colleagues elected me again chair.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Um, first thing we did was we reviewed the exit poll results from the budget code and, uh, you will be receiving a link to those and a c- or a copy. I don't know if there's a link to them.
It'll be both.
Oh, both, okay, and a copy in the Friday update. Um, we had a limited amount of time to kind of look at it, so I suggested that we, next meeting, which will be next month, uh, that we take the time to really dig a little bit further into it. Uh, Dr. Wiles noted, uh, in her perusal over them that the unusual finding that there was an emerging trend of voters turning to printed sources as opposed to digital. And, and the age group was like in the twenty, eighteen to thirteen, you know, we were like very struck by the, by that. So anyway, uh, she and Patrice from our, our BOSEs, uh, communication specialists, they'll, they'll do a little bit more digging into that and see what, what that means. Um, again, you will, um, you will receive a copy of that through, through the, um, through the portal uh, and on the Fri- on the Friday update. Also, it'll be on our website at some point with some redactions of names of people that we don't, they don't wanna really put out. Um, so that's in the works. Uh, second thing we talked about was priorities and goals for this year and we ended up after our discussion coming to three goals are, uh, one would be, which is always our goal every year, community engagement and information sharing regarding the budget. So we'll be doing that again because probably beginning right after the new year, we'll get started on that. Other, we, we set two other goals. One was to reestablish, to look into reestablishing a priorities event. Uh, in the past, those of you that have been there before, before COVID, we used to meet in May uh, with constituent groups from, from the, from the community, uh, the school, students, and we met in mixed groups here in this room in fact, uh, to talk about our thoughts and our thinking about the direction of the district uh, and some, what, what kinds of goals and priorities we should be setting. And that always was a really exciting kind of an opportunity to just think with other people and listen to their thoughts. Uh, so we're gonna, hopefully the communications committee will start to look at a way of bringing that back in, like to do that again. Uh, and the board, of course, was involved in that whole process. And our third goal was we'd like to look into how we, and think about how we might enhance or, or encourage and look at our posting materials as well as outreach to recruit more candidates of diverse backgrounds. That's been talked about over and over again over the last few years, so we'd like to just kind of wrestle with it a little bit. Maybe dig into some other districts, see what they're doing and come up maybe with our own ideas too. We also talked about talking to the newer, new higher es. We have a lot of new higher es this year uh, and getting their input as to what attracted them, um, what, and then maybe, maybe partway through the year, go back and ask them what are the things that they expected that are happening, what are the things they expected that aren't happening, uh, to just to kind of help guide us in our thinking. We will be meeting again on October twelfth at four o'clock at the district office.
Thank you. Uh, policy, any further comments?
Uh, we had a meeting on the twenty-third. I, I wasn't there, as I said, uh, we saw what some of the outcomes of that were. We have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-seventh. Uh, and we'll, you know, we'll hopefully maybe have some answers on these questions we raised tonight, uh, whether we need to even have that discussion about that, uh, policy or not. And, uh, I'm sure we'll get another slew of some bad, some good policies from NISBA.
Weekly meetings. Every once a week, or you meet once a week?
That would be fake news.
Oh.
That would be a hard no.
Uh, so I thought I caught the dates and must have, must have not caught it right. Okay. Um, and then business practices, I believe I'm on the, when this year, what's up?
We haven't met yet.
Yeah, we haven't met yet. I don't think there's a reason to yet. I'm sure if they will let us know.
There will be at some point.
Right. Um, DEI.
Uh, so, who's, maybe tomorrow?
Maybe Thursday, yeah. Okay, we had our orientation for the new folks on it.
Yeah. Mostly was to meet everyone and see who was going to be participating or you've never been? Are you on it again?
Okay, sorry, I have the eye yet.
Yeah, okay. It's, um, it's two of you guys. It's Seema, Blanca, Naima, and.
Okay, great. Okay, I don't think I missed any. Um, so there's public comment number two and Dr. Rivera sent in some comments. Um, I think this is, yeah, carry on, public comment for public comment number two, right. Um, well, Linda, was there any other public comments? Okay, so I'll go ahead and read this, um, from Dr. Rivera who couldn't come here tonight. Hello, I'm sorry, I couldn't be here tonight. I listened to the meeting and have a couple of comments. One, I would like the food services team to further explore the food options to be more inclusive. The parent who emailed us said they were willing to meet with the district and help with this process. Additionally, it would be worth asking what other districts in the area are starting this work. I know how we speak about this work, excuse me, I know how we speak about this work is relevant. Language matters. This aligns well with our district mission around inclusion and the discussion about holidays recognized on the calendar. Number two, my views on the co-curricular activities. I don't believe the GPA should be tied to activities. I think kids being engaged in school is a priority over GPA, especially considering the importance of mental health. Number three, for the cost of the indoor coaches, the student impact seems, the student impact seems great. If there's a way to find the money to help support the indoor track team, I am in support of this. I understand we have unexpected financial issues like tax, tax surgeries in transportation, but the amount of money that dragged impact on students seems too great to just let go. I would like to see what options there are to support the team. Thank you. Steve Rivera, Board President. So with that, I believe we just have our self, board self-evaluation form to complete and we can, oh, oh, board issues and sharing, excuse me.
I just, I wanna make one thing. I should supplement my policy. Uh, I just, I hope students that watch this. I just wa- I will make one thing. I should supplement my policy. Uh, I just, I hope students that watch this with intent now recognize that there is a student, there is an option or a, a way they can pr- make proposals to the policy committee for revisions or new policies. Uh, please, I, I, we, we, it's there for a reason. We welcome, we want more student participation on the policy level. Um, so please keep that in mind.
That was a great idea and I'm glad it came to fruition.
That's all.
Quickly. That's good. Sorry, I skipped over the bullet on here. Any other board issues, ideas and sharing? Okay, so we need a motion to close this and move back into executive session.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Really quickly. Um, recently I was, uh, discussing the banners that there are in the gym for athletes who are twelve seasons. Andy Maycock. Hi. Um, so are students who are, who participate in the play, are they able to do sports at the same time? I think we don't tell them they can't, right?
It's, it's complicated. Um, the, the musical.
Yes. Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Andy.
So participating in the, in musical and a sport is kind of like participating in two sports at the same time. Because the, the time is the same as after school. It's beyond after school. So our activity period ends at three ten. We have rehearsal then. That's when practice starts. Um, we tend to run up, there's a week or two overlap with spring sports. So sometimes we have kids who want to play lacrosse um, or run outdoor track and we have to kind of negotiate the most important week for us, which is show week, with a pretty important week for them, which is the first week of tryouts. So sometimes we have a little conflict there. This past year was an exception because with the musical we did, which was, you know, individual little songs and scenes, we had some kids who were running indoor track at the same time. So we didn't need them to be at every rehearsal. But normally our rehearsal schedule comes out about a week in advance and, you know, we can't promise that we won't need you for, you know, two of the most important basketball games, for example. So we discourage them from trying to do both. Um, this year I was pretty lenient about it. It's, it's really hard to do both. And I don't, it's, it's hard for me to feel good about putting that kind of pressure on kids.
For sure. So my, the second part to that, because I'm trying to get to a point. Um, do we recognize students who are in the plays in a, like, you know, in some kind of fashion? Because it seems to me as a parent of, of children who are both athletes and interested in the arts, that it's disappointing that they will lose that opportunity to be on the banner when arts are also so important. So are we, is there any kind of?
We don't have like a big showcase like that. We don't have a, a banner or a, you know, hall of fame, a wall of fame or anything. Um, you know, we have our, our banquet at the end of each year where we try to celebrate all the kids who worked and, and we have kind of an additional thing for seniors, but we don't have anything like that.
Thank you. And so I just put that out there to the board, that it's something we might want to just keep on our radar, that there are kids, it's a really nice feeling when you come back and you see your name from nineteen ninety-six on that banner. And it's awesome and it's a commitment. It's something to be proud of. But the play is of equal commitment. And so, and equal time investment from the families as well. So it seems to me if you're participating in one, it's sad that you won't be recognized and that you, you may miss out on that sport opportunity. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Could, just wanna, like, Seema just texted me that she actually had two public comments. There was two separate emails. We missed the first one. She read the second one. We didn't read the first one.
Sure. Yep. Can you see it?
If you, if you can't see it, I have it on my phone.
It didn't say public comment on it. It said, oh, board comments during board sharing. Okay. Sorry, Dr. Rivera. I, I'll may as well read it since I have it up here. Um, uh, hello, everyone. Thanks for understanding. I can't be there due to illness. I have two comments and one question. Comment number one, regarding the meal options, I have heard that South Colony is looking into more inclu- into more inclusive options. So that might be a place to start and ask some questions. I think it's reasonable to explore what options our food vendors offer and to think about this for the next RFP for bids. Um, I tried, I saw that and I tried to bring it up while she was here. Uh, it didn't, I forgot about the second one. Comment number two, the second comment answers an email we received over the summer asking Dr. Wiles what, asking Dr. Wiles what else we are doing to ensure students are future-ready beyond the usual curriculum, et cetera. I say that there are no usual efforts because these are dynamic concepts. They are always changing. And all of this information is consistently being shared through newsletters, website, board meetings, et cetera. Um, do you have any comments on additional com- or anybody have any additional comments on the two comments before, and there's a question?
Just that I agree that we should explore the options for the level of, of kosher foods. I don't really think anyone's in disagreement with that. Okay.
So question number one, um, a parent asked me to ask, will teachers put cameras on for students when they are out due to COVID? I was wondering if it's case by case or what the considerations are. Sorry, Dr. Rivera, for forgetting about the two other options or two other comments.
So I, um, I'll read what's on our website around continuity of instruction and then how it's actually playing out. Um, so when students must be absent from school due to COVID nineteen or any other illness, they are responsible for miss- schoolwork and should follow their teacher's policy and schedule for completion. Students and families are encouraged to visit CSOW, that's grades K through two, or Google Classroom sites, grades three and above, whichever is applicable, for assignments as well as complete miss work. Upon return to school, students should follow up with their teachers. However, we have said, if a teacher would like to open a Google Meet for the student out due to COVID or a long-term medical situation, that is allowable, but we do leave it up to the teacher's professional judgment. And teachers will be supported whether they decide to open it or not. So there will, there will be variation. And we knew that when we sent that out, but we're not requiring it.
So there could be times where it's just not feasible for the teacher.
Some of it could depend on the nature of the lesson or, you know, we're just leaving it to their judgment rather than saying one size fits all.
I could just put in a comment there. I realize we're not gonna be changing this policy, um, permanently. Um, but my opinion, especially for the high school where kids really rely on, you know, regular instruction for higher level and harder classes, um, if they're out for five days, that's a, you know, significant chunk of time. It's a significant chunk of time for middle school or an elementary school students as well. Um, and I worry that it could be a deterrent to them testing for symptoms. Um, so just gonna throw that out there.
We talked about all of those things.
Yeah.
COVID has really changed the mindset and the thought process through this. Three years ago, two years, two year, three years ago, we'd be like, no, you can't videotape a classroom. But now it's happened. You could prove that it's possible. Um, I mean, I think it depends what Dr. Wiles said. Okay. Seema has not sent any more comments that I see.
Is it, um, appropriate for a teacher to ask a, a teacher, or, for, I'm sorry, is it for parents who reach out to a teacher and say, you don't typically put the camera on, but would you consider, or should they reach out to Rachel?
Um, I think you could send an email to a parent, to a teacher and ask, but we're, we're not gonna require it. No one is requiring it across the whole region because it's fraught with lots of.
Yeah, no, I'm, I didn't say require. I said it would be awesome.
Yeah. Um, they can ask, but I would still leave it to the teacher's judgment. And then they can call Rachel.
Yeah.
Because that is in fact what will happen.
Great. So if a parent, if a parent reaches out, or parent can reach out to a teacher, the teacher can say, yeah, great, I can do that. Or if it's not feasible and it's a no, then it would, it would go up, but we wouldn't force them to do it, it sounds like.
Yeah, I would think if a parent, if their child is gonna be out any length of time, they'd probably notify the teachers anyway. And maybe in that email, say if, if, if it's possible for any video or camera to be used, it would be great. You could let me know.
Sounds like a plan. Okay. I don't think there's any other emails. And any other public comments? I don't think so. We'll pass that anyway. Um, any other boards issues or sharing? Okay. Going once, twice.
I really like this calendar. Calendar is really nice. I just got a chance to look at it, so. Nice job.
Is it the same one that was sent out in email?
Yeah. I didn't get, I don't get it, so.
I guess I already checked first. It's great.
Pictures with my kids.
It's great. Okay. Last chance, once, twice. Three. Motion to go out of this session or close this board. Uh, Blanca and Rebecca and go motion, I probably did that wrong. Need to go into executive session. Um, Gloria and Blanca, thank you very much. Have a good evening.